From the original agenda, obviously, item number two. We're not gonna worry about so minutes. We have minutes to approve. Let's start with February first. Mr. Ward.
What was presented?
Motion to move, seconded by Andy. Moved by Nate, seconded by Andy. Discussion or changes within the minutes of February first.
Yes.
Nate, go ahead.
I think. Second, I apparently seconded before I arrived.
Wow.
That's good.
I like your.
That's efficient.
Yeah. Pointing ahead.
Yes, alright.
So I don't know who seconded it, but I don't think it was me.
Well, then I want to find it.
February first?
Yeah.
Yeah, under.
Local codes. One, so where did you write?
You were right. It's sitting at three hundred minutes, the first one.
Yes.
Motion was made by Jeff, seconded by Nate. I suspect it was probably me.
Okay.
Which, I have my notes with me, what was it? It was just a motion to approve the minutes of twelve, seven, twenty-two. It was Jeff and Kendra.
Alright, so Kendra, so can we update that to Kendra?
Pretty easy to confuse.
Alright, anything else regarding to the minutes of February first? Seeing none.
Uh, oh. Me, yes, wait a minute, there's another one. See. See. Is this the one with? Nope, that's the next one.
Okay. Additional discussion. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Hi.
Alright, that takes care of February first, let's roll to February fifteenth. So which is the board?
What's presented?
Motion to move.
Seconded.
Seconded, so moved by Nate, seconded by Andy. Discussion or changes?
Yeah, okay, so this is where the wording that I used was not exactly right. I don't really care that much about the wording, but I wouldn't mind adjusting the tone a little bit. This is in, on section C on page one, two, three. Q and A on concrete contract, but then it goes down to the next page. It was up for a while here, and then about quarter of the way down. Quarter of the way down, it says, "The negotiator, he has a different perspective. As soon as you don't apply them, they go unenrolled, because they're not a public high school." And then when looking at ranking, you have to factor in that Concord High School has immigrants intended. And I said new Americans. I wouldn't mind saying here, for the gist of what I was trying to say, it would be something like more diversity. I mean, if you want to stick with what I said, immigrant, new Americans, but if you, if the intent was more diversity.
So you want me to just put more diversity?
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, that would be.
More diverse, okay.
Yeah.
Anybody, any other changes? Alright, all in favor of the minutes as amended?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Alright, and then it looks like we have something sneak on the agenda for, what was it?
Yes, so.
September seventh?
That's my mistake, because Kim.
You don't make mistakes, so.
Kim started it. She emailed me and asked me for, um, where the vote was for you guys to accept the Concord contract and move it forward. And I gave her that date, and she didn't see the motion in the minutes. So I said, "I will have to amend those," because I didn't see it either. And then today, I reread them and it's there, so that's.
So the motion was there.
It's there, so then you're all set.
So we, do we anything with these?
No, they're approved.
They're done, they're already done.
I just missed the motion she asked me.
But you didn't make a mistake.
Well, I know, that's okay. So I put it on the agenda and it should.
You may have, you may have been mistaken, but you weren't. I know.
So they're all set.
Alright, so minutes are done. Public comments?
Public.
Comments, please, anybody? Harold, so you wanted to say something?
Probably want to say something. Harold wrote, "True Street, I have a question, which you may have an answer for now, or may have an answer for later. On the town side, administratively, if there's a call for a recount, there's provisions for that, I believe in the RSA. Couldn't find that on the school side. I'm wondering how the school handles, how the school admin handles a recount request of.
I, there's not always a separation between town and school in the statute, but we follow the same election votes as the town.
Oh, you do?
Yes.
Okay, so, and that's, that set forth any place maybe, or just?
I don't remember offhand.
I'll think what they're having.
But it's, yeah, it's, exactly, there's a lot of times when it's not school and town, school and town, it's just elections in general. It's the election section is usually around RSA forty or so, if you want to look there, but.
No, I actually, I'm asking for somebody who knows about this stuff. And they couldn't, they couldn't find.
Yeah, it's not always spelled out for both.
But as a, as a, as a, so for precedence purpose, from precedent and practice, it's accepted that
Yes.
you follow the same type of procedure.
Yes.
Terrific.
We had a recount.
We did.
We did. Two years ago?
Four years ago.
Four years ago?
It's been a while now, but yeah.
Five years ago?
Yeah.
It was one of the years I was, I read.
I imagine Kelly would still be involved. Yeah.
And counted.
Yeah, I suspect.
Because we've, we've chosen not to do our own elections, we go with the town for elections, so they sort of govern the same.
Truly, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Alright, personal comments? Anybody want to go? Alright. Let's see, general review, we have a couple of tweaks we're gonna make here. So, under, for item D, there's going to be two consents, one for Honeywell, one for Dale, we'll do shortly. Non-public is gonna be under letters C and B, followed with another consent item after the non-public. I was gonna table policies until the new board is seated, if that was okay with everybody?
But unacceptable.
Okay, it's unacceptable to Andy, so we are.
Noted.
Pull a whole stack of policies up, we're doing them all with Andy today. But I was gonna table policies, so that's gone, and then, obviously, item C, under immediate business, is gonna be struck as well because of delaying the election. And those are my changes.
G?
Oh, I'm sorry, item G, which is the fiscal twenty-three update. I wish for attendance. Did anybody else have anything they wanted to change? Some of you didn't know you were gonna be here, so I don't know if, no, good.
Wait, sorry, where are you putting the non-public?
So, non-public is.
It's at number ten.
It's at number ten, but afterwards, there's gonna be another consent item we have to give.
And we added small letter B.
See, B.
Okay, it says C right now.
So, that brings us to consent items. So, we have Dale and Honeywell, I wrote down Honeywell first, so let's start that.
Okay, so, we have an unfortunate invoice from Honeywell and an agreement to sign. They have, as you know, they're proprietary to our heating system, and we have, the software that we have now is two thousand and twelve, and it's not gonna be supported as of October. So I, Josh Verubi reached out to them because it came with a price tag of twenty thousand dollars, and he thought that seemed really extraordinary to update, to do a software update from Honeywell. And they let us know it was a little more than the other schools, because we have specific software, called the EBI, I have no idea what that is. And that's, Deerfield specifically has that software, and it's more expensive to upgrade. And then he, so right now, the problem is, the reason Josh needs to do it right away is he can't update Microsoft on anything. Because once you update Microsoft, that doesn't work, and our heating system wouldn't work, so it's pretty critical, even though the price tag is pretty awful.
That's, it's technical debt, and if Windows goes too long, it'll force an automatic update, and then it'll be locked out.
Thank you.
Everybody got that?
Sorry.
Ish.
I'll take, take your work.
Okay, so, we need to approve some of that.
Yep.
Can we draw that off of a, is that, do we have a technology line somewhere? Or a trust?
We could, maybe wait till the end of the year.
And then decide.
And then decide, yeah, you could look at your surplus, and you could say, "Let's draw down the technology," or just let it come out of the legend.
Can we flag that as an item for, for Nate?
Yep.
Just a follow-up?
What is the duration of this? This is twenty thousand dollars for one year, it looks like.
It's basically software updates, so it'll last however long.
The one we have now is twenty twelve.
Windows does some different game.
Four.
Until they, until they update, you know, something on their end.
I like that term, technical debt.
Yeah, we've had this current one since sixteen, even though it's Windows twelve, like.
It's twenty twelve software.
Yeah, but they went backwards in order to go forward, and then.
Tool, yeah.
Yeah.
This is a Microsoft update.
No, it's Honeywell programmed, but it's, it's tied to the Microsoft update that we can't do.
Our Honeywell OS doesn't work with the newest version of Microsoft that we need to update.
That you use to manage.
Right, I feel like, are we starting discussions about switching the H back system?
Um, we could, but we can't go without a heating system.
That's not what we're discussing.
That's not, that's not a today.
It was tying new equipment into the existing system.
Right, yes.
We're married to Honeywell, unfortunately. A divorce will cost more.
Yeah, okay, that's fair.
Alright, so, what's the dollar amount, twenty-five?
Twenty thousand.
So, I'll look for motion to approve the, is this an invoice?
Um, yeah, the contract.
We want to call it, I'll look for motion to approve the contract with Honeywell for the amount of twenty K.
So.
I guess.
Who wants it?
Moved by Andy.
Everybody wants it.
Seconded by Kendra. Feel free to hear Jeff. If anyone joined.
Yep.
This is gonna be great, just gonna spread this out.
He should probably just have the book, because he wasn't here for the conversation.
It's six ten, Jeff's joining the meeting. Alright, so Jeff, just to speed you up, basically, our Honeywell system somehow went out of date. Update it, twenty thousand dollars, if we don't do it, it's just gonna stop working at some point, and you can explain that. We're gonna act on it now.
A lot of money.
Feel free to join if you'd like, or you can wait this one out. So, that being said, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Jeff, abstaining. Can you be signed that?
I can sign.
You can sign, okay, you said something about a signature. Alright.
Yeah.
Okay.
It needs.
Dale, we owe Dale some money.
We do.
They always do, so I have invoice number one for Dale. We usually do elementary first, so elementary transportation. For the month of February, we have four buses, seventeen days, twenty-seven thousand five hundred and twenty dollars and eleven cents. So which is the board? Motion.
To approve, motion to approve.
Seconded, Jeff, so moved by Jeff, seconded by Andy, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number two, we have the high school transportation, amount of thirteen thousand eight hundred sixty-three dollars and fifty cents, that is seventeen days, two buses, two Concord.
Sorry, could you just repeat your amount again?
Thirteen thousand eight hundred sixty-three dollars and fifty cents.
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Jeff.
Seconded.
Seconded by Andy. I know you'll see it at some point. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that takes care of Dale. Review of correspondence.
I don't think we have anything.
Nah, there was, there was, there was one email from Representative Verville.
Oh, yep, I have that.
That we need to add to the minutes. Mr. Verville, Representative Verville claimed that one of the published postings that the board had put up on Facebook was electionary. Clarifications said, every single item that we have published, that have been glossy and pretty wonderful. Nate crafted them all, they all went to the school district's legal counsel, legal counsel reviewed every single one of them, made some edits to a few of them. The edited versions were what was published on Facebook, so although a member of the community can claim something, we certainly are well aware that we do not want to be electionary, we run everything past legal for that reason, in advance of it going public. He also questioned whether or not it was discussed at meeting, and certainly discussed publicly in a meeting here, so. But feel free to add that to the minutes, so everybody can see what he had to say. I believe that was all we had, alright? Good. I have facility, facility update on here.
I don't think we have anything new, do we, Kristen, Brian? We haven't anything new facilities, dude.
He, he had included a, a plan.
Yeah, oh, his, yep, he gave you the list of his capital projects you asked for at the last meeting.
And then, did we get elevations from the engineer for the parking lot yet?
I haven't seen anything.
I don't think so.
Can you ask Chris to get a, poke him again, or?
Since he did, he did a good job last time.
Yeah.
He got a response, he didn't get robbed.
Let's help to drive to the guy's office, walk in and sit down.
And the, I think the roofing contract is ready.
Ready to be executed on?
Waiting for him to, them to send it to him, yeah, but they've been notified, and we're waiting to get that started.
Okay, alright, so, you guys want to talk about these capital projects real quick? Jeff, I, you may have some.
Yeah.
Jeff and Andy, you guys have been wearing masks and some stuff to weigh on. So if we guys, you guys pull that up.
Everybody in front of you.
Alright. So, what we have, and here is kind of between twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-six. Twenty-two, twenty-three, Chris has outlined the things that we're looking to do, and actually, it looks like we've got most of these underway, so the roof replacement, we're all well aware of. Parking lot is still in the works, but we should have, hopefully, a project ready for the summer. Assuming the town supports funding the rest of it as well, the article. Fire alarm upgrade project is already in the works, we would have had, was last week vacation week, two weeks ago, is it?
Last week.
Last week? Two weeks, two weeks ago. So we would have had, they would have been in here all week long, pulling wires and making noise. So then we have April vacation week, they'll be back again, working on pulling runs, and then when the kids are gone, they'll finish that project up, we'll get everything recertified and tested, and that will bring us into a fully updated and replaced fire alarm system. Panel, devices, wiring, everything from soup to nuts. Gable ends for the vinyl siding replacement, that's a relatively small part of the bigger project, this roof replacement. Homeland safety upgrades, suspect.
That was the grant that he received.
Okay, and then the start of the solar project, that's in the works, it hasn't gotten, it's not off the ground yet, but that's his next, I think, big project. That brings us into the twenty-three, twenty-four, which.
Can we just pause a little, hold on a second, Jeff, where are we at with getting an RFP together for that? Do we have any plans, specs to go there?
I, I think we just got, he just got into the grant system.
Yeah, it was just the, my funding was just awarded, so I don't think we've done anything yet. It was awarded a while ago, but the grant, it was added to the grant management system, we had to submit a form.
Yep.
I guess the question is more so, are we planning on having Chris write together kind of the bid package for that? You know, this is what we want for ducted film on the windows, this is what we want to do for lots of hardware.
I, I don't think we've talked about it yet, I will ask him if that was his plan, so we can support him, if he needs it.
Yeah, just because I think it's, um, I don't remember the exact dollar, it's probably the thing that we're gonna.
Yeah, I don't remember either, there was, I think there were like two or three things, weren't there?
Yeah, the film, the doors, all exterior doors.
Yep, and there was something by like the secretary, I think.
Yeah, the windows.
Oh, the windows, yeah.
Yeah, I think AI, yeah.
Yeah.
I just want, I've got two weeks left, I'm about to get out, I'm.
Extended that time.
Unless there's another blizzard. You could have rolled two weeks.
Oh, no.
It's a blizzard.
I'll let him know.
If not, maybe we should consider having. It's just, with those projects, it's, it's a lot, yeah, it's more of just like.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
Making sure we get good apples, apples and goods.
So, certainly, you'll see, well, I guess Friday, you guys will probably see, we'll see Chris hopefully tomorrow. But tomorrow, between tomorrow and Friday, if we're gonna try to abuse Jeff while we still have him, we don't have much time.
Well, Jeff can volunteer to help us, because I'm not on the board.
Oh, I feel so much better when we're obligated to the abuse.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Alright.
And you're gonna wait, Chris, now?
That certainly was well within your willows. Alright, so, we pause here for a second, so twenty-three, twenty-four on his list is the solar project. Hopefully, an installation of a solar array of some sort. Unit ventilator upgrades, or start the unit ventilator upgrade project, planning twenty-four, twenty-five, will be replacing unit ventilators, starting the window replacement project. Twenty-five, twenty-six would be a replacement of the windows. So, that would effectively be between now and twenty-six, if we can kind of keep on these, this project list, that will completely redo the envelope of the building.
Art, um, for the homeland safety upgrades, are we putting film on windows that we're then gonna be replacing the next year? Yeah, we should make sure we don't do that. I think he's pretty insightful with some of so, but we'll make sure.
Somebody was in the building today doing all the measurements, we can write it for that, because it'll be a big project, too.
Yeah.
Regardless of what's going, what we, the security grant, and what are we doing for this project?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the, the commercial, redoing the commercial ways we need to pay the size of the project.
So he is working with someone, so help him.
Was that for the window replacements, or the film that he's always measuring?
Yeah, somebody was, yeah.
Somebody was measuring windows for something.
There was somebody in the middle, it's like wandering around looking for.
Well, then we know it wasn't me.
Do we want to think about an upcoming agenda item of, I can't remember if I brought this up, was that the CIP upgrading or CIP? Looking at it, does that require a visit from the planning board or anything, or can we just reopen that? Because we haven't looked at it for four or five years or something.
Did they never get back together?
I thought, it was a cam, camera from the plant.
Yeah, Southern Hemisphere.
Southern Hemisphere planning was supposed to get everybody back in the room again, I never.
But yes, to answer your question, we can move forward with our own CIP regardless of writing the plan and all that with the town.
Could be up to date with it.
So we could start updating that, so I think this is really a, this is a topic for the next board, but I know this board had discussed possibly looking at revisiting a small project, a different project, maybe for next year. So, that can become part of that greater project as well.
And you still want to stick with the second meeting as work sessions?
Yeah, well, so the next meeting is the fifteenth. So we have another meeting in March?
No, the next is, okay, April fifth.
Is April?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, in general, do you want to still do the second meeting for sessions?
Presumably so, but obviously, that's.
Totally for the board.
Or next board to decide, presumably so, so if that's the case, we do that second April meeting, we can, so we'll discuss that. State now definitely here. Yep. Right? Yeah.
I think it might be prudent to have, you know, for all, for the capital improvement plan in general, to bring, talk to, open the door to talking with Ma'Vali Brensinger again, and having her help us navigate that, so that we could have one coherent, despite changes for the board and everything. If we're looking at a ten-year plan, that's three different boards, and rather than we've done a really good job of clearly, literally, lending or knocking up projects, but.
Well, I think.
And they've got a lot of this, a lot of projects and that.
They've, yeah, I, I think, I mean, I think some of the feedback on the, on the greater level from a year ago was it splitting up work on this building, and then potential expansion to isolating them. And it seems like, we'll know more in a couple of weeks, but if the community is rallying, we aren't making investments in this building, we can keep taking the jumps. And if we can just keep funding a year and a half in advance, or a year in advance, then so be it.
I think just to be completely clear, I mean, the benefit of having Ma'Vali would be that we get a very consistent product.
Yeah.
Everything from the window packages to the unit ventilators competing with the cantile, you know, so that we don't end up with kind of a ductated bubble gum approach, and all these different Band-Aids will continue to have a very mean, coherent way of executing it. And we get, when we go to put together our RFPs, they're actual RFPs with specs that, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I think another benefit is currently, the makeup of the board is that there are people who know what this stuff is. But that may not be the case in four years, so having.
Trying to get it on paper.
Someone tell us what needs to be done.
Is it worth, I guess we can decide inviting Ma'Vali to that second meeting in April to start what we're really looking for the next year, make a decision. But let's, let's, I guess I'm still setting that agenda, so let's put that on as a discussion.
Okay.
That works. Okay. Alright, so that's, that's the general outline of Chris's vision, I think we need to start looking at that, and start kind of this next process of, you know, what do we want to try to do if we want to make another one of this? Maybe, maybe just. Questions? No? Alright. Ready?
Okay.
Questions? Can you give me that question?
No, I thought, I was just waiting for you to go on to the next one.
Waiting for a rant. Alright, fiscal twenty-three, what do you got?
I got the number from Amber, but I didn't have time to review to see where your surplus is coming from. But I do know you're at seven hundred thirty-one thousand right now. That is before the trust fund, so if the trust fund transfers from surplus pass, not the trust funds, the warrant articles pass, that would be three hundred thousand, that would come out of that. And then, if you decide to put retainage back, because you spent all of that this year without funding that million dollars, that, you know, typically, the board has put a couple hundred thousand dollars into that, or a hundred ninety for some weird reason, but.
Now, I will also say, I've been done this for as long as I have, at this point in the year, it's, we start seeing the numbers, but as we start closing lines, things change, so.
Yep, that's why I kind of want to look at where that surplus came from, to see if it's how stable and reliable that is right now.
But.
But that's the number right now.
It's our current trust book. Alright. And so, assuming we, two hundred K in retainage and three hundred K, if everything was to pass, don't blow that, it doesn't need a whole lot coming into the year, two hundred K is a, not quite a week's worth. Right? Alright. That brings us to reports, we're making good time, folks. PTO update, are you, are you PTO updating today?
I am.
You are, come on up, what do you got?
So it's been a while.
We've been here.
I know, I've been here online.
Okay.
So, we've been doing a lot of fun stuff, we just finished up our snowman competition, so that was a ton of fun, if you didn't see the pictures on Facebook, you should definitely check them out. The winner was the Miles family with their incredible snowmobile made out of snow, and their snowmobile driver, they even gave them spark plug eyes, it was really cute. The snow has wreaked havoc on everybody's lives, including ours, we had two teacher lunches planned, and the snow canceled both of them. So we're planning a special treat for them on Friday this week, so hopefully, that will make up for missing two lunches. We're doing national nutrition one this month for March. We were able to give all the students a healthy snack of oranges on Monday, so I hope they all enjoyed it. We'll plan one more snack for them in a week and a half, another Monday. We have upcoming our book sale on Friday and Saturday this week, we collected for quite a while, for Danielle has like an entire garage full of books that we're sorting now. So definitely stop by on Friday or Saturday, and see what kind of books we have to offer for sale. Who class if it's going on at the same time, you can get a basketball game and some books, and then hit up the eighth grade concession table for some snacks. We are also planning our plant sale, it's a little ways out, but we've already set the date, the Saturday before Mother's Day, like we've been doing in the past, so May thirteenth. You get your hanging baskets for mom right out front.
Excellent. We have questions?
We have another meeting next Tuesday, right here, if anyone wants to join us.
How's the, curiosity? The eighth grade fundraising for their trip, are they making headway, or like, like, do we need to start saying, "Eighth grade parents, come on, step up, we need to fundraise more?"
I don't know numbers about eighth grade. I feel like there's always more money that needs to be made, like, I, I got the feeling when I talked to an eighth grade parent that they have a little ways to go still.
So, eighth grade parents, wherever you are.
I can zoom in on you.
Don't scare them, nobody watches them anyway.
So they have, I know some eighth grade things coming up, are the cornhole tournaments that they're working on with the Legion, I don't know the date of that unfortunately, but it's been all.
I believe it is March twentieth.
You're gonna be there?
Calendar prime.
So, eighth grade parents, go play cornhole.
Sign up for April foolishness.
Sign up for foolishness.
Sunday to twenty-sixth.
Do all those things and help raise funds for the eighth grade class trip.
And send dollars for your kids to buy popcorn on Fridays.
Have kids buy popcorn. Have kids buy popcorn.
Oh, Little Caesars, I didn't hear about that yet. I heard it was a potential, but nothing definite. It's all speculation because I don't have an eighth grader.
Because you're not there. I just hear about it in the background.
Sort of in the know sometimes.
Alright. Any other questions? Thank you very much, as always. Danielle, thank you for giving up your, apparently your garage, forming a little community library there. Alright. Executive Board Nate, do you have anything?
Yeah, well, we've been working on a big thing.
We have.
Who knows what we can announce?
It's, it's not, we, so we had a whole board meeting to meet and interview our superintendent finalists, but, and the minutes were sealed pending finalization of that process and that's not been completed yet, so.
So you're reporting nothing?
Made in breath.
Nothing to report. Nothing to report, alright. That's supposed to report?
Yeah, and then I'll roll into CRB, you.
Yes.
Yep, yep, that's okay. I have the notes up so that I can refresh my memory. Even though I took the minutes, I can't remember what I wrote, so. So this principal's report covers unfortunately February second, sorry, to March fifteenth. So it's not too bad, it's not too bad. So Friday, February third, I want to make sure I thank all the presenters who came out for our annual career day for our eighth graders. It's always a big event for our magnets and the kids really enjoyed hearing about the different careers that they could have someday. Congratulations to all our basketball teams. They all made it to the playoffs. Our girls B team won the championship. Our boys B team made it to the championship, but unfortunately did not, well, I should say, fortunately they made it to the championship, but they did not win. Both our girls and boys A team made it to the playoffs. On February seventeenth, we had our monthly all-school meeting and our fourth graders hosted this past month. They had a lot of fun. On Friday, the seventeenth, also, we had a middle school dance sponsored by the student council. I don't have the date, is there a March dance?
There is no March.
No March dance.
Oh, the April dance.
April dance, okay. On Monday, the twentieth, was CRB meeting and I'll review those minutes in a moment. Tuesday, the twenty-first, was open house at. I got a lot of great feedback from families who attended that. Thursday, the twenty-third, we were supposed to have our family math night. That was canceled due to a snow day. And it is rescheduled for the end of the month, Thursday, the thirtieth, from five thirty to seven. And PTO is doing a pizza fundraiser that night, or seventh grade, seventh grade's doing a pizza fundraiser that night. So that had to be rescheduled. That's been rescheduled three times, this is the third time. So family math night, I hope, I hope everybody can come. That's a K to five event. Usually we do, we do fifth grades, K to five. Friday, the twenty-fourth, our kids participated in the heart, American Heart Challenge, where we had jump roping and hoops for heart. It's a big event here, put on by our PD team and big thank you to all the folks who supported this annual event. We raised twelve thousand eight hundred thirteen dollars and twenty-seven cents. Over February vacation, Mr. Leighton worked with his brother, Mr. Leighton. They did a server upgrade and so we're greatly appreciative, appreciative of their work. Wednesday, the eighth of March, we had our biography kickoff for fourth grade. That's an annual event for those who have had fourth graders. Some snowboard, some famous snowboarder was here.
Yeah.
A famous Mount Everest climber was here. AKA Heather Gregory-Brian were the judges.
We did quite well there.
They did do, they did do very well. They did do very well. On Thursday the night, we had a great spaghetti dinner. It was great to have so many people back in the house for that. We did have our talent show last year in person, but we did not have the spaghetti dinner. So we served about a hundred and twenty people for dinner that night and the DEA raised about two hundred thirty dollars for the Deerfield food pantry. So that was a great success. As, as Nicole mentioned, the Parks and Rec Classic was last weekend, is again this weekend and their PTO book sale will be going on in the cafeteria. So come on down and then stop for a snack. The DCS Read-a-thon is off to a great start. I think we're already well over four thousand dollars in the Read-a-thon, so our kids are doing great raising money and reading. These events will take place over the next month. Our Read Across America will continue with the Battle of the Books. That's when different staff members, Mr. West read a book and he battled Mrs. Swanson today. Mrs. Swanson and Mr. West went head to head. We'll find out in the morning who won that battle. And then tomorrow will be another book to, teacher reading a book. I think it's me. And I will battle the person that won between Mr. West and Mrs. Swanson.
I can lose.
Well, I, I, I lose gracefully.
You can't lose.
But I can't lose. I lost last year to Mr. West. I did. Shocking. Two new, a new thing that we're doing this year is the middle school is doing a book trivia. So every morning, somebody's coming down from the middle school and asking a trivia question and the Beth Mostu is posting a Google form in their Google classroom so that they can respond to that and there's a winner at the end of the day for that every day. We have our scavenger hunt going on, our character scavenger hunt today, tomorrow and Friday. We aren't allowed to decorate our doors because that was a fire hazard, so we're doing a bulletin board contest. And then really, we're only doing two days for dress up. Oftentimes there's this big theme and every day with dress up. We just did that with our kindness week, so this Friday will be dressed as your favorite character day. And then next Friday is Read My Shirt Day, which was a big hit, has been a big hit over the past couple of years. So those are some good things going on. Thank you to our PTO who did deliver delicious orange slices. The kids love them and so does the staff. Oranges are pretty much all gone. I think there's some whole oranges left, so if you could come slice those and bag them up.
I think we sliced almost a hundred pounds.
Seriously.
It was a lot.
They were delicious oranges. You know, sometimes they were delicious.
They came to feed the kids to kale, babe.
Dried kale.
Dried kale.
That's painful.
Yeah.
Doesn't really sound.
Our veggies will be very better and there'll be rainbows.
Nice, very nice. As you know, we were supposed to have a professional development day yesterday and that got canceled, hence our PTO lunch got canceled for the second time in a row. As an administration team, we decided to put a plan together. So on Wednesdays, as you know, our staff stay for professional development, every Wednesday from three o'clock to four o'clock, so we're going to extend that time from three to five. So there'll be two hours on Wednesday, April fifth, two hours on April twelfth and two hours on April nineteenth. Beth and Brooke had put together this fabulous technology day featuring the AirPod and diving into choice boards and looking at can, just all this stuff. So we decided to break that up into two-hour intervals, so we'll still be able to present the information. Our paraprofessionals will also attend that because they were supposed to be there on this past Tuesday via the flyer and that's in their contract, so they were supposed to be there. So they will also be staying to make up those two hours that, over the three, over the three weeks, so for a total of six hours. Obviously, life happens, you know, we've got kids, teachers with daycare issues and things, appointments that have already been made. So we did let our staff know that if there's a conflict for some reason or another, just to let administration know and that we could work out a plan for them to, to meet those professional development hours. And then just some upcoming things before, because we have a couple of weeks before our next meeting. I mentioned the PTO book sale this weekend on Friday and Saturday. Also trimester two closes on Friday. So report cards, the teachers that are working on the report cards, the portal was open a couple of weeks ago for them to start working on that. They'll be mailed home on Friday, the thirty-first. And also on Monday, this, what they're coming up, the twentieth, our preschool not have school that day because it's child fine, which is mandatory. Child fine for, in our school, so that will be happening on Monday, the twentieth. And then our twenty-seventh, the twenty-eighth of March, our team will be going to NAMSS. I know the board will cannot expedite your song to make sure that there's a team of six people, including Mr. Greve and some other middle school teachers that will be attending. NAMSS is a national, a national.
New England League of Middle.
New England League of Middle School, not the national. New England League of Middle School. So it's a big middle school conference and it's great that we are able to bring a team again this year. So we appreciate that. Anything else that you think of?
Questions regarding the report? Are you going to CRBS?
I am going to CRBU.
Good.
So we had our meeting on February twentieth. Our next meeting is April seventeenth. We, we had an opportunity to let the curriculum committees meet at the beginning of February, so we spent some time during this meeting reviewing minutes from each committee's meeting. So ELA reviewed their minutes and what they covered, math reviewed theirs. They gave an update on the big idea progress, you know, looking at rubrics and looking at what has been covered of big ideas. And tried to fill in some hole during that committee meeting, decided that they were gonna, next year they were gonna dive into curriculum with the teams a little bit more. We're hoping to schedule at least, at least three, if not five, opportunities for our teams to meet in their curriculum committee. It's really, it's such a hard thing to balance between all the things that were going on, so we're going to build that into our PD schedule so that team, curriculum teams have a chance to meet and try to get some things accomplished that they want to get accomplished. Let's see, anything major, library is, the last time the library curriculum was updated, there were not competencies. So Beth has been working on, working on incorporating her library curriculum with ELA as well as some technology competencies and some STEM competencies. So she's been working on that. I mentioned next school year, having, having to meet at least three times a year, if not five times a year. We do have a new director of curriculum instruction and assessment that will be with us. Our curriculum teams have asked for some vertical teaming so that we can start to do some curriculum mapping vertically as well as, you know, according to, across the grade levels as well as what, within grade levels. So that's, are going to be our big focus. And that's all I have for CRB.
Questions? Alright. That brings us to the NBC. The NBC has not met since prior to the ELIBs. It'll have an organization meeting sometime after elections. Alright, policies we've tabled, that brings us to, not many information.
Actually, I have one, I could.
I'm sorry?
Sorry, no, I said no, but me said yes.
Sorry, go ahead. This is just the beginning of, I assume, the season, but as we go forward, maybe this is a question more to the administration. This is the time we start thinking about next year and foreign language, I'm sure is at the front of our concern and so at some point, maybe you'll update on where that is for next year.
Sure.
Are we looking for, is that a, still listing is an open position or?
We did not, we posted it through the summer, had a candidate that did not, that ended up going to a different school. So we did, we did post for it.
We do, we only want to have that conversation.
Yeah, for sure.
Alright. Anything else? Alright, so that brings us to, prior to going to non-public, we will allow public comments. Any? Seeing none, crickets, alright. It is six forty-four. I look for motion to non-public for an HRSA ninety-one, eight, three, two, small letter C and B.
Salute.
I have a motion by Nate, second by Jeff. Alright, it's a roll call. Jeff?
Yay.
Andy?
Hi.
Myself, yes, Nate?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Alright, we're gonna stay in here and throw everybody out or we order another one?
I'm gonna stay in here.